Guys, I wasn't quite ready, but good morning. We technically can start our stream out here. So I'm sitting out by the bell. Maybe we'll talk to the guys outside. We had a giggle on my way in about um that I can film them too. So they're so cute and fun out there. So good morning. I know I haven't really talked to you. Actually talk about a few things if you can. I didn't really need to hit go live. It just kind of happened. We'll go with it. But if you are here, good morning. Say hello so I know that you're watching. I'm gonna flip it to me. Okay. Hey. Sorry, sorry. Okay. Can you guys hear me? I am not plugged into the microphone yet. So we're gonna see. I had some issues last time. We'll see how that works out. I wish I could see. And I um I really want to talk to you guys about some stuff about um the meeting on last Monday. Uh I I reshared a video that I had made. It's on YouTube. You can find the link in the Facebook feed. Wow, this light makes my hair look really great. So you you can definitely check that out. There was a really unique moment in time. We got our little sneak peek at some information. So I may have a today. Uh we'll get there. And I might want you guys to decide if um I've got microphone into. So hello, good morning. I'm keeping it pointed at me because I don't want to film the people walking in. So. And I don't have great signal in here today. As far as. There's a couple folks I'm really looking forward to seeing today that I hope that they are here. I don't know if anyone who looks for what's coming. Bit my hair too.
You guys agreed to this?
Can't.
And just already signed. So you're good to go.
And I also don't want to, you know, pollute out a couple of people's conversations. We're in a public building. Police officers that are out front will kind of have to do this. I'm gonna go see if the door is open yet because it was not. And uh I gotta get my AirPod in. If it doesn't continue, okay, right, so um. I'm not gonna be here, but I encourage everybody that's been watching. Even if you're not a resident of Lawrenceville, I'm gonna run over to the personatarius office when I get done and see if I can't get that information about the response for the contempt of court and the extensions. They're public documents and I'm really curious what uh is written in them. And I have had a lot of time um getting uh getting a hold of that. And I'm also having a lot of time getting a hold of water sewer reports too uh from Apex. So let's get some stuff moving here real quick. I still gotta get my AirPod out, but. Uh Twitch, you should be up too. Yeah, Twitch should be up too. Let me share something else with you guys real quick before I go in. We had uh we had some talks, remember when I got here about um how important it was to be honest um and transparent, right? And that's my mission. So I started this because there was a lot of gossip um going around town about what was happening during the meetings, what was being said, who it was being said about, and that folks were being accused of things. And we have seen this even during the meetings. I was recently informed that still there's some folks that don't watch and that's okay. You don't have to. But for those of you that are watching and reporting to folks who don't watch, I'm gonna sound like Mr. Chilson in a second, but please tell the truth. The fact of the matter is when you say that and everyone else knows the truth because they're watching, you look dumb. It's not only not fair to me, I I don't have a side. Whatever the optics look like, uh Mr. Chilson happens to be front and center and in charge right now and I am looking into right now. Uh what I think I bring to the table, and we've talked about this a lot, is you ask me, doesn't matter who your cousins are, doesn't matter. Where you come from, doesn't matter, okay? Those things have no bias in my brain. So I told everyone when I got here that you really wouldn't be immune, thanks, that you you would not be immune to my style of journalism and reporting. So if you're interested, um there's actually a name for it. It's called gonzo journalism, G-O-N-Z-O. You can look it up. It's actually quite interesting. Uh the guy who wrote Fear and Loathing in Las Vegas has actually kind of coined it and started it. Where it's a style of reporting where sometimes the author is the protagonist in the story. Okay, so that's what this has kind of turned into being. Uh it does not mean that I, ooh, that I am not recording and uh sharing facts. So there's that. If you're going to tell people about my feed and what happens during my live feed, please be honest or please share the whole context. Uh I think that context is important. I struggle to shorten the videos for you guys because I'm never sure what's really important to you. So I need all of your help, okay? I need all of your help with that. So I can see Mr. Chilson's frustration, you know, about the things that that get put on social media and I can now I can relate, you know? So um just be honest and and if anything, you know, encourage folks to come watch. So send them a link. I mean, I've made some short highlights videos. I've got some more. I haven't necessarily uploaded them because Facebook is difficult to navigate. And if you're looking for a certain meeting, I want you to be able to find that certain meeting. You guys will notice I've posted um. I wanna get in there. I don't want to be late. I have posted. I'm a hot mesh. You guys know I'm so busy. I should just leave my cup out. Here we go. Get to look at my gray hair. And I got the Cubits shoes. Oh, everybody's on. I'm coming right behind you. Just. I have a whole armful of stuff behind me too. Excuse me.
Morning Natalie.
Morning Roger.
Morning.
Morning.
Janice.
Natalie.
That's the change.
This is where I started out. This is where I started out. This is where I want in.
I just work here. I don't care.
Well, I I couldn't get here and sit in the middle of the rest of chairs. So I know, well.
I'll better kick your head.
You know. That's actually.
I don't know. I have to tell.
So it'll be it'll be on the internet. Oh, great.
It's a recording.
I don't want to be.
I think he likes it next to.
You will come and leaving. I don't want my chalk. Don't get a choice. Okay, good. I don't want the bad guys to find me. Frond me.
Morning Tim.
Morning.
Are you operating up there now?
We're functional. Still got a lot of uh file later everywhere now.
Good morning. Nothing under the table here.
I didn't know anything was there.
To my house.
Something new every day.
If you'd like a copy of the order, I could give you a copy.
Yeah, I just, yeah, it's um.
Well, good morning and I would invite all of you to join me on a pledge to the flag.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberated and just for all.
And I thank you. Who we are in our first official board meeting of commissioners of 2023. We welcome everyone. And I would ask you if there is any one who would offer comment on the agenda, agenda items only at this time. Okay, hearing none. Janice, would you communicate on regard to information, please?
The first item at last meeting in December, we approved a contract with Johnson Controls. Uh the amount that was reported was incorrect. The correct amount is $500. So that is just a correction to what was approved last month. The other is um due to the resignation of two commissioners uh from the election board for this year. And Mark Hamilton is an incumbent who will be running for commissioner. Uh the three had to resign from the election board. Judge Wheeler has appointed two so far to replace those spots and we are waiting on the third order, which we should have within the next week or so.
Mr. Kieran. I'd like to comment on.
Please.
The reason that that I resigned and and that Eric resigned from the Board of Elections is that we are both actively supporting a candidate and we didn't think it would be right to be on the Board of Elections and be actively supporting a candidate. That's why we did that.
Absolutely. Thank you, Roger, for pointing that out. So there'll be a complete new board representing the vote of election once the judge has met his decision, all right? Thank you, Janice. Um I have some minutes, please. All right. Let's see, the minutes are there. Well, let you mark.
Yep, they're signed by all and uh I will move to accept those minutes. Go second then.
There are no additions or corrections. We'll prove them as presented, all in favor with aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Invite Casey to do the personnel items, please.
I have a few items for information for the board this morning. Uh the first information for hire is for Jane Shumway. Hire her as a secretary in the district attorney's office at $14 per hour with benefits. Uh we also have the transfer of Luanne Schaefer uh from a part-time clerk in the assessment office to full-time deputy sheriff in the sheriff's office at $17 per hour with benefits effective 1/9/23. Uh we also have transfer of Daniel Irwin from administrative assistant in the district attorney's office to probation officer in the probation department effective 12/13/22 at 1879 per hour. We also have the following resignations slash retirements. Amanda Clark from the Tyoga County Prison effective 12/27/22. Shaw Zaid from Support Services effective 12/30/22. Christopher Brackman from Emergency Services effective 12/31/22. Dale Nowman from Support Services effective 1/13/23. And Nancy Yogurt, Conservation District, effective 1/13/23. Uh the next item I have is for approval is to hire Gregory Grant as a maintenance worker two at 1550 per hour with benefits.
Intake, thank you. Second. Second. All discussion? All in favor with aye?
Aye.
The next item I have for approval is to hire Melanie Horn as a caseworker one in the intake unit of family services at $18 per hour with benefits.
So move.
Thank you. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Uh the next item I have is a grouping of hiring part-time on-call corrections officers at the jail at 1381 per hour with no benefits. And that would be for Dawson Stiles, Brady Eastwood, Morgan Smith, Cassandra Webster, Alexis Adams, and McKenna Sullivan.
So move.
And a second.
Discussion? All in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The next item I have is to approve the promotion of Lindsay Stout from caseworker one to caseworker two in the intake unit of family services at 1910 per hour.
So move. Second.
Discussion? All in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And the last item I have is to approve the promotion of Sue Ann Carson to the placement liaison in family services at $55,000 per year.
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And next up is a request to approve the appointment of Catherine Mason to the Potter Tag the Library Assistant Board of Directors.
Before we move on, Casey, thank you for preparing uh presentation like that and grouping. That's efficient. Thank you. All right, we have a recommendation to place uh Jennifer on the uh Potter Library Board. Do I have motion?
I'll I'll move to place Jennifer on that board.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Catherine Mason. Catherine Mason.
So was I. All right.
You moved it.
Yep.
Second.
All in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Uh next up, a requirement deeper, is to appoint Gerald Quiner to the best board of directors for a three-year term.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
No, he's uh he's been on the board for the um last approximately a year as a replacement. He's uh been doing a good job. We need we need folks to volunteer in positions like that. Grateful that he uh would uh accept another three years.
All right, we want to thank Gerald, all in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Next up is a request for the 2023 county farm preservation program at $125,000 and it would be paid by escrow accounts if approved. That's the same amount that was requested last year.
Okay.
I will move the uh request for the $25,000 in funding.
Uh the motion, we have a second.
Second.
Thank you. I'm gonna make comment here. Please appreciate the fact that the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania is the single largest provides for the single largest um acreage of set aside in the United States. And um yeah. Okay. And over the years, some counties have actually gone in to uh to put that decision to the public because it's that important to preserve and protect farmland. And that is the best farmland in the region, has to meet a criteria. And after it's been uh viewed and met all that criteria, it is, and I'll state it again, it is actually taking steps to preserve the most productive farmland in that region. So uh we have actually 28 farms so far and the total acres is 3,671 acres. So our efforts are supported and and the dollars that are collected from the landfill offsets the donated amount for the purchase and then it's matched by the state. So our county, like many others, see the value in that. I guess we're ready to take action if there's any further comment.
Well, I would like simply what I believe has been said before many times. It's it's really a shame that we have so many farmers that are they're going out of business or struggling. That's one thing. But if you take the farmland production out of service and you put something else on it, it's never coming back. At least you can try and put those farmers back into business if that land is preserved. So I this is a very, very important program.
Thank you. All in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Next is an amendment to a currently set we currently have with the United States Department of Veterans Affairs, adjusting their rent over the next couple of months while they are temporarily in another uh building due to our flooding.
Okay. Now the motion.
I'll move second.
Thank you. Properly moved in second. Does anyone want to make comment?
I will, but I don't know, Tim.
Go right ahead.
Go ahead, Mark. I'll and I'll follow you.
All right, so December 27th uh in the morning, the maintenance staff found that there was a water pipe uh break in the ceiling on the first floor of the VA clinic. At this time, there was two to three inches of water on the first floor and the drop ceiling had had fallen in the basement and there was standing water in the basement as well. They quickly took action, notified Tim, uh the clinic staff and started to clean up the facility. And over the time last week, um maintenance staff cleaned up that facility as well as uh set up the VA clinic as well as Tim's operation for a temporary facility in 1888 Showway Hill Road. The cooperation between Tim's office, the maintenance department, the commissioner's office, human services, uh everybody worked together to to get this done and um you know, that's how we get things done here. So appreciate that and and Tim worked hard to catalog all the damaged uh items in his office, which was pretty much everything. The maintenance staff did a great job, uh you know, cutting out wet material, getting drywall removed, drop ceilings removed, flooring's pulled up. Those guys have really went above and beyond to um make this happen, so.
Kim?
Yeah, I echo what Mark said. Between the the county and the and the federal's uh maintenance people, IT, all that, they the clinic is now open. They opened up this morning at eight o'clock. It's not. It it's it's a a good location. Everybody likes it there. Our office, we have, we're pretty much up to just appointments right now. We're not taking any walk-ins. Two reasons of that, we have a lot of personal information laying around trying to dry record down. Like I said, we lost everything. And uh security issues uh with with folks coming in. Right now, we're just doing appointments, but we are up and running, getting our equipment replaced. Luckily, two of us had our, I mean, we take our laptops home pretty much every night. So that was a huge uh thing for us to be able to, we could plug right in. We could have started right up the neck that day if we needed to with equipment. We've got a lot of support from the state, Department of Military Veterans Affairs also. So um we said we're up and running and probably in another week or two, we'll be fully staffed and functioned and ready to roll with new equipment.
Kim, I'm gonna ask a question. Can you give us a rough idea of how many people you do serve or see?
Right now, our current caseload is um about 1,800 currently. Now, there's uh just under 5,000 veterans in Tyoga County. That's our current caseload of active cases. And we've seen probably the majority of the 5,000 uh veterans and their dependents. So uh it is, uh we are quite busy, but we are, you know, reaching out, my phone, uh video and uh email to uh serve the veterans here in Tyoga County.
Well, to you, your staff, to our personnel that were quick to respond to that. If you remember, that was a very cold period in time. There were a lot of water pipes, a lot of issues around and not one like everyone else. They had their own issues, but everybody went in and took care of this. It was not something that we could adore and everyone did their job above and beyond, as you stated. So congratulations, Tim, Mark, Mark Hamilton.
Yeah, just uh you you mentioned the numbers for your caseload, but that was just your caseload. That was not with the clinic as well, was it?
No, the clinic uh caseload, they currently have um over 1,200 patients registered there at the clinic. They use the clinic. They went um contingency operations and moved and contacted veterans to add appointments that we to go offer them to go to Cowersport Clinic, which is open two days a month currently. So they were able to use that. They brought in the mobile clinic to run labs at our current location. So there was a lot of uh trying to continue services for all of our veterans.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to also add, oh, a second. I would like to also add that the VA clinic and the Tyoga County VA will be operating at 1888 Showway Hill Road for the next 12 months, um tentatively, but.
We're making some modifications up there and we're correcting some of the harm that was created by the flooding. But again, it is about making sure veterans are served. So great job, everyone. We have to take action on this. All in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Next up is a renewal of the SAVEN agreement. It's the one you're agreeing between with Pennsylvania District Attorney's Office.
So move. Second.
This is an annual action that we do and it serves as a resource for our probation court and a valued asset. All in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Next is a proposal from Jesse Fisk, seeking for the restoration of bearing of the bearing walls in hallway secondary room of the Home Services Building.
Sounds kind of important to me if it's a bearing wall. Do you have a motion?
So move.
Second.
All in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Next is a renewal of our agreement for solicitor and lawyer and employment council for 2023.
So move. Second.
Any comments? They certainly serve us well. All in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Next up is a one-year agreement with Motorola for preventive maintenance up at 911 on their radio equipment.
So move. Second then.
I give credit to Dave Koik and others for putting a program like this together and then without the agreements, we don't have this success. All in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And next are the agreements with Department of Human Services that are on your agenda.
Okay.
So move.
And second.
All all in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
To the point of the uh meeting where we are open for public comment.
A lot to bring up.
Sure.
My name is Edwin Calvin. Medical towers for the last three years and I have a problem with the people that run them. Pinnacle Towers for the last three years and I have a problem with the people that run them. The maintenance, not the maintenance, the staff in Mansfield. I'll give you one example. About a month ago, at approximately two o'clock in the morning, the fire alarm went off. Everybody evacuated the best they could. It was two o'clock in the morning and the fire alarm went off for probably five minutes, six minutes approximately and the people were out there in their night clothes, some of them, because they just took off. And I brought that up to their attention, why the fire alarm went off and there was no fire. They said the borough had a problem with water pressure and there was no water pressure coming into the building and that set the fire alarm off. I don't quite understand that. And further than that, it, just the past week ago, we had temperatures five below zero for four days. Now, if that had have happened then, frostbite would have set into them people. Now, the fire department got there, they sent one representative, so he must have known. Somebody told me he was the chief. This is what I heard now. And he said there was a low water pressure, you'd go back to your apartments, which people did. When we brought up at a meeting exactly what happened, we were told that's what it was, low water pressure and that's the way the alarm system is set up, which I think is, they should have a separate system or something or other. People shouldn't have to evacuate when they don't, these people are eighty, ninety, one woman was a hundred years old, just passed a hundred years old, had to evacuate. So most of, we have ten tenants, let me know if I'm running too long, we have ten tenants approximately on the floor. Half of them are, need aids to walk around. They have walkers, some have wheelchairs, canes and so forth. So their proper procedure for them is to stay in the stairwell until the fire department comes and evacuates them. Now, a lot of them, like that. And the loss of that fire alarm, it went off, believe me. They're probably in a cemetery, they heard it. And you couldn't hear nothing. I called nine-one-one. And they said they were aware of the problem and they would send somebody, which they did. They treat us like kids over there, I think. Now, I brought up an issue here. We have a voting for tenants association last week or two weeks ago and they ran a thing, they counted the votes. I asked them if they could publish the votes on a bulletin board. The way they published it was forty-five percent got this vote, fifty-five percent got this vote. I said, can you tally them up and let us know how each individual got a vote? They said, no. I said, why is that? They said, well, a lot of people. I said, I think the people are eighty, ninety years old, understand when they run for office that. And that was his reason for not doing that. I have conflict with him quite a bit. I don't get along with him. I think he misleads us. I won't say lies, misleading, misleads us, which is the same word. But we've been misled over there. And I understand some of you people here are on the board there.
Yeah, I'm on that board.
Okay. I haven't never seen somebody come over there from the board and visit us. Now, if we have a guest, we have to get permission from the lady in charge there, which is, she's a new lady. She's doing a good job, I think. I think she's doing a good job. That's Lisa. I don't know what her last name is. You're probably familiar with her. But that's, I figure we treat her like kids there.
Well, Mr. Calhoun, what we'll do is we'll log your commentary.
I, excuse me, I didn't put my hearing aids in today. VA approved, thank you.
Well, thank you, Tim.
Ed, you can use mine. I got mine in.
What I'm going to say is your communication has been heard. We will address that. Not that we have a power to change water pressure or some of the protocol. Certainly, some of that is about safety, but your points of, your point in regard to the welfare of the people at the home, we'll take that into consideration. We'll make comment. Is that correct, Roger? So your comments are logged and they will be, they will be addressed.
Okay, thank you. I checked the water pressure. We're in five minutes of the fire alarm and there was that seventy-five pounds, which is normal. I asked them how, they don't give us no answers there. They just, just be quiet and go back to your classroom. That's about the way I feel, I tell it.
We've heard your remarks.
Okay, thank you.
You are welcome.
Right, thank you.
Okay, yes.
My name is Cindy Cop. I live in Pinnacle Towers. I'm sure Roger Bun is aware of me. I do attend the Tioga Bradford redevelopment, housing redevelopment authority board of directors meetings most months. We live in a very unique building. We have, we are a five-story apartment building that houses people, special tenants. Elderly, disabled, handicapped people. Now, Mark, I read in the paper that you're a member of the statewide nine-one-one advisory board. You're a member of the National Association of Counties Justice and Public Safety Committee and you are or have been on the board of Area Agency on Aging. You're aware that elderly people are, require special consideration. Okay. We have requested that we have the fire department personnel to present an evacuation training drill. We have many new people coming in and out monthly, elderly people that are not aware of what our alarms sound like. We have multiple alarms in the building. We are not told what the alarms are for. We're being told two different things. Two different people. Alarms in the building. We were told in a fire and safety meeting that we could request guest speakers. Normally, it would be fire and police people to come in. We have requested the fire department and we have been told by management that they have already selected the guest speakers. There's a lot of confusion with these elderly people having several alarm systems and many evacuation plans. We have four or five evacuation plans. We need to have someone come in so the, so the tenants can hear what the different alarms sound like to walk through an evacuation plan so that we can get people out safely. The alarm system was so loud, I was, I was in, I was disabled the next day because the sound, the decibels of that fire alarm drove my head. I have multiple sclerosis. I've been blessed with having Lyme disease for twenty-five years untreated. It's given me multiple sclerosis symptoms. This fire, this fire drill needs to happen. We were told in a fire and safety meeting, it was questioned as to why this alarm went off. Maintenance said to the woman, if, if you're attacking me, you need to leave. The tenant wanted to know why the fire alarm went off. It took them three weeks to post something. It said that it was low water pressure at the borough. I went to the borough meeting, asked them and they said they had nothing about it. I have the minutes here with me today. We need some changes at Pinnacle Towers with management. All the safety issues. I know there isn't time to discuss everything. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Further public comment? All right, we'll adjourn. The next commissioner's meeting is February fourteenth. Mark that down. We'll adjourn and move directly into the salary board. And that is, I believe, they're signed. That's all right.
I'd like to thank the VA people here. They do a wonderful job.
You are welcome and they are acknowledged. I agree with you.
I went sixty years without. And I should have been there from the beginning because they are helpful in every which way you want.
Agree with you. Thank you. The minutes of the salary board are signed by all. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
A second?
Second.
All right. All in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Next up, during the organizational meeting, Judge Wheeler was unable to come down to approve the salaries for the court offices due to court being in session. He has since reviewed those salaries and he has submitted in writing that he approves the salaries for all the court offices that were not done through.
Do you understand it, Natalie? That's what we were waiting for?
Right.
Okay, all right. And for anyone else, it was an action that needed to be taken and because he was unavailable responsible, responsibility in court, so he did make effort to make that clear as his approval. So we'll take action on that.
So moved. Second.
Aye, that makes it part of the permanent minutes. We'll adjourn and move directly into salary board. And they are also signed by all present. Do I have a motion?
Do I make a motion?
Second.
Properly moved and second. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Next up is to approve payment of two thousand one hundred and twenty-six to Coram Ferry for December actuarial services. Do I make a motion?
Second.
All in favor to pay the bills with aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And the remaining is just for information of the board.
That will satisfy our meeting today. I want to thank everybody for coming and look forward to seeing your smiling faces on the next one.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
It's, we use self-credit. And.
Do they what?
It's just an accounting that we do.
Then if you need them, here, I'm single.
That's right, exactly. Yeah, my email's on there. Yeah, if they, if they. I don't want to do the firing.
Just an answer. Yes.